So we ready to go here colleagues? Okay. Nice to see everybody. It's been just a few minutes since we left our previous meeting. So, nice to have you all back here and nice to see everybody here in the chambers this evening. So, the first order of business is just to call this business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, October 6th, 2025 to order and ask Clerk Borling to perform the roll call.
Commissioner Coney. Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Wilson. Vice Mayor Hess. Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you Clerk Borling. For our opening ceremony this evening, we are honored and blessed to have Pastor Marshall from the Second Baptist Church here to provide an invocation and he will come forward shortly. I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Dear God, we come to you this evening thanking you for this great day that you've allowed us to be a part of. We come to you right now with a humble heart praising your mighty name for the great things you've done in our lives. God, we praise you for all you've done in our great city, Father God, and we just look for you to continue to bless the leadership of our city. Continue to bring us together, Father God, that we may move on one accord for the youngest individual in our community to the eldest individual in our community. Allow us to see your future and your plan, Father God. We move in a mighty way through the city of Kalamazoo. Let us be a blessing to the state and to this country that no division will hinder us, but Father God, we will move and unite in love as Jesus loved all. Father God, we praise you because of who you are and what you've done and we continue to look forward to the great things that are to come through the work that you have placed within us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again Pastor Marshall from the Second Baptist Church. Appreciate you getting us started here. We do have some special guests here this evening. We have a journalism class from Western Michigan University, I believe, yes, filling up a couple rows, so you are here for an historic event this evening. You didn't know that, but this is where we're taking some actions that are only taken. Let me see, when was the last time, Manager Ritzma?
2013.
2013, okay, 12 years ago. So, welcome for that. And we also have a proclamation, a very important proclamation this evening. Just a reminder for those of you who don't often attend city commission meetings is that we have an opportunity to recognize important events in Kalamazoo and organizations and we have one this evening for Juvenile Justice Awareness Month. It's going to be read by Commissioner Wilson and I will come down with the actual proclamation. Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks Mayor. Could I have the representatives from Bent Not Broken come up to receive this proclamation? All right, welcome, welcome. So, this is an observation of Juvenile Justice Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas Juvenile Justice Awareness Month observed from October 1st through 31st shines a light on the critical issues faced by youth entangled in the juvenile justice system, recognizing the urgent need for reform and the promotion of rehabilitation over punishment. And whereas this month-long observance aims to raise public awareness through educational campaigns, community events, and advocacy efforts that highlight the importance of providing support and resources to at-risk youth, ensuring they have the opportunity to thrive and break free from the cycle of incarceration. And whereas Juvenile Justice Awareness Month calls upon communities, organizations, and policymakers to work together towards creating a more just and equitable system that prioritizes the well-being and potential of every young person. And whereas Bent Not Broken is dedicated to the empowerment and support of youth impacted by the juvenile justice system, recognizing the immense potential and resilience within each individual youth. And whereas Bent Not Broken provides a safe and nurturing environment for youth to engage in peer coaching, leadership development, and community building activities. And whereas the organization is committed to fostering a sense of agency and self-worth among its participants, ensuring that every youth feels heard, valued, and supported. And whereas the youth of Bent Not Broken actively participate in the creation and implementation of programs, taking ownership of their personal and collective growth. And whereas Bent Not Broken staff and board members, many of whom have been directly impacted by the criminal legal system, bring invaluable perspectives and experiences that enhance the organization's mission. And whereas Bent Not Broken has demonstrated a commitment to continuous improvement using pre-tests and post-tests to measure the effectiveness of its programs in empowering youth and supporting staff. And whereas Bent Not Broken seeks to break the cycle of incarceration and build a brighter future for its participants through education, mentorship, and advocacy, and shall continue its mission with unwavering dedication, striving to uplift and empower every youth it serves, and to create a more just and equitable society for all. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and our Mayor David F. Anderson, I do hereby proclaim October 1st through 31st, 2025, as Juvenile Justice Awareness
They didn't want to speak, so I guess I would. I would just like to thank y'all, man. We'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to work with the youth and allowing us to care, you know what I'm saying? Not a lot of people care about the youth, so we just going to keep it short and thank y'all, all of y'all.
Appreciate everyone that showed up, not only doing the work, but showing up for their proclamations as well, so thank you so much. Now we are down to the adoption of the formal agenda and I'm going to propose that we adjust our agenda a bit. We have an item related to the process for hiring a new city manager, which is under L, New Business, and I'm proposing that we move that forward to directly after Public Comments, which is E. And Attorney Leal, do we need a motion to do that?
Just to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, so, so we'll have that adjustment and then Commissioners, are there any items that are currently on the consent agenda, G, that you would like to have moved to H, the rigor agenda? All right, see, no one. May I have a motion then to adopt the agenda as adjusted?
Some moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess. Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion passes, thank you, Commission. Next, Communications, Manager Ritzma.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items under Communications. First, I'm going to invite forward the Arts Council of Greater Kalamazoo, the Director Kristin Chesick, and the Programs Director Kim Shaw. They have a presentation they would like to give to the Commission. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is Rebecca, are you here somewhere? Come on up. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kristin Chesick, the Executive Director of the Arts Council of Greater Kalamazoo. I am here tonight with Kim Shaw, who is our Programs Director. On behalf of the Arts Council Board, Staff, and Volunteers, we wanted to express our deepest gratitude to the city of Kalamazoo for their inspiration, guidance, and partnership in bringing the very first Brush the Block mural festival to life. This festival marks an incredible milestone for Kalamazoo, the first of its kind here, a celebration that is quite literally paints our city with color, creativity, and connection. And it would not have been possible without the vision, determination, and stick-to-it-iveness of the city of Kalamazoo, and in particular Rebecca Kick, whose leadership and belief in the power of public art have helped turn a dream into a vibrant reality. So we appreciate her very much. We have a plaque for the city of Kalamazoo in appreciation of Brush the Block. Public art and festivals like this remind us that creative expression is not an extra, it is essential. It brings people together across differences, sparks conversation, and transforms the spaces that we share. Art gives us a sense of belonging. It helps us see our city and ourselves in new ways. And Kalamazoo has long been a place that values creativity and culture, and Brush the Block is a shining example of what happens when a community invests in imagination. Thank you to all of you, city of Kalamazoo, to Rebecca, and to everyone who helped make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is by our C, Jamie McCarthy, our Development Manager. She's going to provide a presentation on our Transformational Brownfield Plan that will be coming before the Commission at the next meeting.
All right, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager Ritzma. Thank you for having us. I'm joined here with Logan Mulholland with Fishbeck, who is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Consultant as well. And so the two of us are going to be talking about the Transformational Brownfield Plan. At the dais, you have a fact sheet, so there's going to be some numbers and information in that fact sheet that you're welcome to take a look at. As City Manager mentioned, the Brownfield Plan is going to be coming forward to you at your next meeting, is our plan here. But we wanted to give you some of that information this evening, so you had a chance to ask us questions and get some of this information ahead of time. So, at the end here, we'll have some time for those questions and you can feel free to ask anything that we don't bring up during our presentation. Let's see if my clicker heel will work. Okay, it looks like it's just a little bit delayed. So I wanted to bring you back to this timeline that we started with when we first kicked off this project with you all in June of this year. These projects start off with our applicant and our state partners. This is the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC. You're going to hear us use that acronym this evening. And there's also a city role here, and that's with our city staff, with you, the Commission, and with our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And so we're going to talk about that process as well. But we've been heading through these steps diligently and really this summer, we started kicking off this project and kicking off our local approval process. And we're really to the end here. We're to these last few steps and hoping to get this to the state of Michigan for their approval at the end of the year. So we are here at the last approval steps here locally. You've been seeing this on your agenda pretty regularly now. You've been approving different tax abatements. You have an item on the agenda this evening. You'll have some more at this next meeting. And I want to mention for public viewing and download, you can see the full Brownfield Plan at that link there at the bottom. You can Google "City of Kalamazoo Brownfield Plans" and the main website will come up. It's the item at the bottom of that page. It's a rather long plan, so that's why you have that three-page fact sheet in front of you as well. It's got all of the items there. In June, we spent time really talking about what the Transformational Brownfield Program looks like at the state. It really is a state program, different from the traditional Brownfield program that you're used to approving with the local property taxes, because there are a whole lot of other revenue streams that come into play with a Transformational Brownfield Plan. And we're going to look at those in just a little bit and you're going to see all of the additional dollars in tax revenues that the state approves when they look at one of these transformational plans. But I wanted to point out just a few things as you start to make your decisions and your evaluation of this plan that's really important to remember. First of all, that this is a highly competitive program and it's very limited in the state of Michigan. And it allows for state taxes that typically the city of Kalamazoo doesn't see, it doesn't benefit from. It allows those to roll into this project and it will benefit the Kalamazoo community. And you're going to see a couple of those here on the slide and we're going to see those exact dollar amounts in just a moment. I want to mention, I think it's important for you all to know as you're making this decision as well, that there is a cap on the amount of this particular incentive. It was written into the Brownfield Act and there is some advocacy, there's some desire within the state of Michigan to raise that cap. That hasn't happened at this time. And so right now, there are 13 projects across the state of Michigan that are approved under this cap, that are waiting, going through this process, trying to get approved. And so the project that you're looking at today, looking at approving this month, is one of those 13 that's being looked at and under consideration in the state of Michigan. So, Kalamazoo is very fortunate to have one of those projects that's potentially leveraging in and looking at getting these state dollars. One of the things we also covered in June in more detail, but I wanted to bring you back to those, are the projects that are included in this plan. So we have these three unique sites all lumped together into this one plan where we're getting almost $1 million of investment into Kalamazoo. And we're getting activation at these three sites that across the city have a varying amount of investment that's needed. Just very quickly, I wanted to point out Spearflex is located on East Kalamazoo Avenue. It's, you know, former commercial property that will be converted into much-needed residential space, so 57 units there. We have 619 Porter, which is, that rendering that you see there is going to be mostly new construction. It's actually mostly a vacant parcel now, so it'll have a mix of that commercial component you see on the corner and then 58 new apartment units. That's going to be targeting much more of a workforce housing rental mix. And then at the bottom there, you see the Michigan Avenue Courthouse or the MAC. And that is going to be a historic renovation. The outside of that property is going to look very similar to what you see today, but it is vacant in the inside and so that's going to be converted into a boutique hotel right in the, you know, heart of downtown at Michigan and Rose. And so that'll have the commercial amenities that you can see along with the hotel. It'd be 127 hotel keys or hotel rooms that'll go along with that renovation. I'm going to have Logan come up and talk to you about the economic benefits, because I think what you've been hearing about are the taxes that go along with this, or maybe the taxes that you feel like are maybe forgone or being put into this project over a period of time, which is certainly part of what the local community or the state is doing or using to get a project like this off the ground. And that's a model that MEDC uses across downtowns in Michigan to get these sort of very large-scale projects up and built, that you know buildings in downtowns can last 100 years and then we keep seeing those renovated and active in a downtown. But there are some really positive economic benefits that we wanted to let you know about that MEDC and city staff look at to understand, you know, does a project kind of tick the box as it needs to get this level of incentive? And so, we're going to talk about some of the things, both in the short, mid, and long term, that go along with a project like the Transformational Brownfield Project you're evaluating today. You want to talk about these, Logan?
Thank you. Excited to be here tonight. So, the economic benefits anticipated through these three different projects include 552 construction jobs. 619, which is anticipated to be the first project in these three set, is going to be working with a local construction firm, so we do anticipate a lot of these jobs being local construction jobs. Additionally, there's 93 permanent jobs that is going to be created within the development, mostly retail and then the hotel space. And the average salary for the construction workers is around $75,000 and the average salary for those retail hotel workers is around $44,000 annually. And then obviously workforce housing, all housing is good housing, right? So there's 115 new residential units going to be created by the development. It's anticipated that 172 residents will live in those units and that just goes to achieve the Kalamazoo County Housing Plan, which is some of those metrics at the lower part of the screen here. There's also some community benefits that I wanted to touch on, including new city operating taxes. So obviously how tax increment financing works is that you delay that new increment that's generated by the development, but you continue to receive those base taxes. So right now, the city operating from these three projects, multiple parcels, receive around $20,000 towards the city operating tax. Once the development is done and Brownfield Plan sunsets, the increase of that city operating millage will be $223,000, which is obviously a huge increase. There's also a community benefits agreement, so a lot of our different, a couple of our projects are in different taxing authority districts, including the Northside Cultural Business District, and they had to agree to step aside on that future increment in order to allow the Brownfield Authority to capture it for this Transformational Brownfield Plan. So part of that negotiation included a $700,000 amount to get the developers paid to that authority to kind of make them whole from stepping aside on that future increment that they're passing up. Additionally, debt millages and special assessments continue to be paid by the development and they're not capturable by the Brownfield Plan, so there's over $3.4 million of school debt that will be paid by the developments that cannot be captured by the Brownfield Authority and will go to paying down that debt over the 30 years, along with just under $50,000 for the juvenile home debt millage. And obviously having a lot more residents and a lot more jobs and workers downtown, it's going to increase daytime and nighttime activity and hopefully support a lot of our local businesses here. And then, I think you want to take this slide?
All right, thank you. I just wanted to touch on the items in your fact sheet. You can definitely take a look at those, but in summary, this is a full Brownfield Plan term, so you're looking at 30 years. The details are in that fact sheet. But to look at the incentive itself, I wanted to take a little bit of look at what is that proportionality? So what is the state looking to support versus what is local incentive? And so if you look at the bottom line here, you're looking at about, just shy of 20% of the incentive is going to be carried by that local increment from the property taxes and the remaining, just over 80%, is being carried by all of these other tax streams that are being approved by the state. So that's things like the construction period tax, sales tax, which you can see that column for the MAC is contributing a lot of those sales tax that you get from hotel room taxes and the sales tax generated from the activities in the hotel. The residential income tax, again, from residents that are living in both of the other two projects that have primarily residential tenants in those units. And then you have some commercial payroll taxes that are coming a little bit from each of the three projects. And then you see the breakdown in the local increment. And then the state also gives some of the real estate taxes as well. So you kind of see that breakdown. In total, if you were to add everything up, we're looking at right around 54 million to support the project. Again, just under 20% of that is a local support, so around 10 million. Do you want to talk a little bit about how, like, financing works versus how the TIF flows into the project?
Yeah, so I wanted to talk a little bit about how abatements and the tax refinancing work. So you can see here on this slide, it talks about the sources for the project. So how are they funding this nearly $100 million project? And you can see the majority of this is through traditional debt. Now, the way that they're able to secure 63% of traditional debt is through the tax increments and the tax abatements that are on the property or that they're requesting to be on the property, which will decrease their cash flow for like the, having to pay so much taxes. The tax abatements help decrease that operating expense and then the tax increment financing once, over time, obviously helps bring cash back into the deal, which helps pay down that debt. So it's not like tax refinancing or tax abatements is a number that you just get to plug into your sources and uses on the development. They still have to upfront cash, pay for a lot of this, along with contributing 26% of cash equity to the deal. And then some other smaller percentages here include historic preservation tax credit equity, which they are able to put that upfront, and then construction period tax savings and grant and loan incentives. So each of these incentives work in a different way to kind of help build this capital stack And so, as I mentioned, there's three tax abatements that are being requested across the three different projects. So for 619 Porter, that's a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, or also known as NEZ. So this reduces the proportionality of the millage rates that are taxed on the property by the statewide average millage rate, which I believe is a little, like about half. I think it's a little bit more in the city of Kalamazoo because you have so many millages, but it's for 12 years with a three-year phase-in for city and county operating, so the millages slowly come back in those final three years. And the total value of the abatement is estimated to be about $1.2 million over the 15-year abatement period. For the MAC, it's anticipated that a Commercial Redevelopment Act abatement will be requested and that freezes the millages at the prior year's taxable value, so essentially freezes what the city is already receiving over a 12-year period and that estimated abatement value is $2.1 million. And then lastly, for Spearflex, it's a Commercial Rehabilitation Act tax abatement, not to be confused with the last one, which reduces millages at the, for the new rehab at a taxable value that the assessor sets. And that impact is
And then some other smaller percentages here include historic preservation tax credit equity, which they are able to put that upfront, and then construction period tax savings and grant and loan incentives. So each of these incentives work in a different way to kind of help build this capital stack And so as I mentioned, there's three tax abatements that are being requested across the three different projects. So for 619 Porter, that's a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, or also known as NEZ. So this reduces the proportionality of the millage rates that are taxed on the property by the statewide average millage rate, which I believe is a little, like about half. I think it's a little bit more in the city of Kalamazoo, because you have so many millages. But it's for 12 years with a three-year phase-in for city and county operating, so the millages slowly come back in those final three years. And the total value of the abatement is estimated to be about $1.2 million over the 15-year abatement period. For the MAC, it's anticipated that a Commercial Redevelopment Act abatement will be requested, and that freezes the millages at the prior year's taxable value, so essentially freezes what the city is already receiving over a 12-year period, and that estimated abatement value is $2.1 million. And then lastly, for Spearflex, it's a Commercial Rehabilitation Act tax abatement, not to be confused with the last one, which reduces millages at the, for the new rehab at a taxable value that the assessor sets, and that impact is over 10 years and is $462,000. I believe all three of the tax abatements' value is around 3 million. Oh, and that's all we have, so. Did you want to talk about anything else, or we can open up for questions?
Well, first of all, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here, Logan and Jamie. Good to see you again. Thanks for running through this. Questions at this time, commissioners? So there's no action on this evening. This is information. This will be on our agenda in the future. Are we looking at our next meeting for an item to be on our agenda then? You want to talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah, we have a number of items that are coming up. So you have the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone creation of a district this evening that you're taking some action on. Then we have both the MAC and the Spearflex districts have been created at a previous meeting, and we have applications in for those tax exemption certificates. And so you're setting the public hearing for the October 20th meeting, so then you can take action on those certificates on the 20th, along with putting the Transformational Brownfield Plan itself on your agenda for action on October 20th as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Questions at this point, commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mia. Thank you all for being here. When I think about the construction jobs, I immediately think about NACD and the workforce training component that they have. Has the developers been in relationship or conversations about potentially hiring some of those new directors of the workforce development to get them into, as an entryway to get into the construction sector?
We have the representatives from the developer team here with us. I'm looking back at them to see if they have any comments they want to make. I have not heard about any direct conversations with neighborhood programs. I know that they have secured and have been talking about a local development firm, and I'm not sure if that firm works and hires from that exact program.
Good evening. I'm Mark Chokot with Plaza Corp., and we're the developer for the projects. And the answer is yes, there. We do plan on, we're probably going to have two or three separate contractors, general contractors, working on that. Each of these source locally, each of these would want to work with that program and draw from that program. And in effect, many of the contractors we work with also are in mentoring relationships with that program and other like programs. And so, yes, we support that and look forward to that as well.
If you own the record now, so we got to see some of those folks.
That's why I came up.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other questions at this time? Commissioner Peddell?
Sure. I apologize. I think I might have asked this before, but can you remind me again the different abatement periods and the rationale for why those are different for each of the three projects?
It's mostly driven by statute, so the maximum has been requested for each of these. And the reason why they're different for each of the structures is because they're different projects and they have different eligibility. So it's basically driven by statute, as you can see on the screen, I'm not sure if you guys can see it still, but it's 15 years for 619 Porter. The MAC is 12 years, and then Spearflex is 10 years, so.
And then just for the community's knowledge as well, so even though each of these projects has been kind of discussed in some ways kind of piecemealed by each individual of the three projects, they're all part of this Transformational Brownfield, and so they're kind of, I guess, a package deal, if you will, in the long run, right?
Yes, that's correct. In order to qualify for the Transformational Brownfield Plan, there are, it's like a chart in the statute essentially, where each population has to qualify with a certain amount of investment. So I actually have that on your fact sheet, if you still have that in front of you. It's the table on page two, and since the city of Kalamazoo population is 73,000, they have to meet a minimum threshold investment of 50 million. And this project is almost reaching 100 million, so they're well above that threshold. And then I have in here the individual investment for each of the projects, so once they hit the final three projects, that's how they're able to get that transformational amount.
It's very helpful. Thank you for putting that in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Peddell. Other questions this time? All right, once again, thank you. Complicated topic. Thank you for finding a way to lay it out, I think, in understandable fashion, so thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Now is the opportunity for public comments. Just as a reminder here, you will have four minutes to make a public comment on any topic that you choose. If you want to have your name or contact information recorded or you want to be responded to, please make sure to sign in over here with a sign-in sheet just next to the clerk. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kay. I live in the township, but I'm very involved in the city. They were mentioning about a little bit over 44,000, and I just want to put that into perspective. If we're talking about one-person household, 44,000 still falls between very low and low income. If we're talking about maybe like primary breadwinner and there's about four or more, that's very low, extremely low income, so nobody can support themselves on that kind of wage. I seen that the CAPER report, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report presentation was given the last meeting, September 15, 2025. It basically talked about HUD, Housing and Urban Development, CDBG money, and home money investments for housing and housing redevelopment, evictions. And so this is just specifically like what the city has invested. To me, when I see these numbers, it's just, it's just not enough. I've been going through the consolidated, new consolidated plan for the next four years, and just like 753 households under affordable housing goal for six-year period, critical repairs were 603 with the need that there is and the conditions for housing. When we get down to like just the consolidated plan itself, it just speaks of a greater need. It speaks about housing conditions. It talks about over 56% of, let's see, so there's households experiencing housing problems, right? And there's a list that it goes into like inadequate housing and the levels. It says 78% make 50% or less of the area median income, indicating a lack of adequate housing options for very low and extremely low-income residents in our community. Without a greater number of affordable housing options, rental and ownership costs lead to significant levels of housing burden. According to the 2022 Community Survey Five-Year Estimated Plan, okay, so it's going to go into detail, but basically it goes on to say like when people don't have enough for housing, they have to make sacrifices. And to me, like, these kinds of programs that benefit for these NEZ tax abatements, like for downtown, who is going to be able to afford to live downtown? It just doesn't make sense to me to be putting more housing downtown when what we need to focus on is, is making these programs more robust. And I know like, you know, there's procedures, and this is how you use NEZ tax abatement programs and all this stuff, but it just doesn't seem like this commission does enough to really address the systemic part, right? We're just stuck under a Band-Aid of, yes, we help so many people. I see people patting themselves in the back, but it's not systemic. And when we talk about where we are in the conditions of this country, there's no room to be just like lukewarm or just looking to do the bare minimum. Like, we need to be ready for all the attacks that Trump has done, even for HUD. He wrote right there that the radical left, on the HUD website, when you open the HUD website, it says the radical left has shut down the government because they have a wish list. What's on the wish list? Human rights. So I just want to say there is a real attack on everything that is happening, and this is going to affect us locally, and we need to see y'all really act on this stuff, not just do this performative stuff and focus on downtown. We got an arena coming. There's an 11 million investment in that.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight just to, one, say thank you to Commissioner Decker. We finally were able to meet and wanted to be in person to acknowledge that. I could have called, but I've been busy these last few meetings, so, but I wanted to do it in person, face-to-face, so thank you. I look forward to working with you via conversations that we've had. Secondly, I want to thank this commission for supporting our Freedom Fund banquet, which was a huge success, sold out. So again, thank you for that ongoing support. Jean, want to thank you for your induction, Hall of Fame, go girl. And lastly, I think, oh, also want to thank the city and county clerk offices for our collaboration for our upcoming event, which is going to be held October 16, and it's election education one-on-one, so we have put together a real nice program for the community. So that's going to be held at the Douglas, I think at 5:30, thereabouts, yeah. So, and lastly, there was something else that I can't remember what it was. Oh, you, Jim. I know you're going to be leaving here on the 18th, so I'm going to squeeze one more meeting in with you, just as a follow-up. So that's it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the commissioners, the mayor, vice mayor. You all are doing a great job, and it's a tough job, so kudos to you all. And also to let everyone know that I am Keisha Dickerson, and I'm running for city commissioner.
Thank you.
Hello, I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. My name is Brent Walter. I live here in the Kalamazoo area, in Texas Township area. But anyway, my purpose in coming before you is I recently contacted the water department inquiring about any kind of a discount for senior citizens, and they said they did not have anything, and so to come before you, present that to you. So meanwhile, I did some research. I found out that Portage, the city of Portage offers a 10% discount for seniors on their water bills, and other utilities such as Consumers Energy offers a discount for senior citizens. So just recently, it was brought out, for instance, for Medicare coming up, this next year is going to probably increase approximately 10% with our COLA or cost of living increase will probably just barely cover that cost. So with all the increases and with inflation and so forth, I'm just hoping that the city of Kalamazoo would consider that. I know they're very generous in helping programs such as children attending the local colleges, so again, I'm hoping that Kalamazoo would consider us senior citizens as well. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Savano. I've talked to you guys before. Last time I came here, I practically begged you guys to be a little proactive in regards to ICE. Since I last talked to you, the Supreme Court has rubber-stamped racial profiling. ICE is descending on cities across the country. ICE has been in our city. I have photos of ICE agent that I confronted in the Edison neighborhood. A local organization, Michigan Immigrant Rights Center, has put out a guide for municipalities on how to proactively respond. I want to leave it with you guys and encourage you to read it. Next time I'm here, we can talk about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, again. My name is Tina. I have been coming to every city commission meeting for the, almost eight years now. For eight long years, I've asked you and asked you over and over again and begged you to do something about the flooding on the south side of town. I live in the side of town that James Baker calls us, the borough of Kalamazoo, the same side of town that you want to put two new buildings in, which is a south-town neighborhood. It's a shame I have to keep coming down here two times a month, asking you to fix your storm drains, your storm sewers, that are not working in my neighborhood. They are failing. They are flooding our streets out, and then they are, after they flood the streets out, because they're not working properly, you have standing flooding sewer water in the streets. How many more years do your residents have to wait to deal with you, the city, not doing your job? How many years do we have to wait for the city to fix their problem that they caused for our neighborhood? And Mr. Anderson, it's time to vote again. You always bring up stuff every time it's time to vote. You bring up the Asylum Lake thing, that's just to get people to vote for you. You go to the senior centers, you get them to vote for you. You get the Western College, because you figure they're dumb, they'll vote for you. You talk a good talk, you know? Every time Anderson runs for mayor, people rush to call him kind, compassionate, deeply in caring about Kalamazoo. Let's get real, I've been coming here eight years. No one's never talked to me about the flooding. No one's never did anything about it. We're so kind and compassionate about that. A senior citizen should not have to come here and fight for her neighborhood to not flood, because the city of Kalamazoo is not doing their job. Our mayor is also a landlord. He's the vice president of the foundation, which runs HUD Housing across the city. There are same, some properties that residents are living in with mold, broken pipes, infestations, no air when it's really, when we're in a heat wave. When they speak up, people have wrongly evicted them and let them know where to go. This isn't hearsay. This is all documented. Look on the HUD Housing thing. You'll see it all. The realities, the polite speeches, and the ribbon cuttings don't reveal. That's not compassion, that's control. While some are busy praising how nice he seems in public, I know a lot of homeless people that are out in the streets, because they can't afford the rent. And now you're getting ready to build another apartments that's not even going to be able for people to afford, because it's downtown. You don't want poor people downtown. Lord forbid you give us a place to live down here. Showing up for photo ops and calling in compassion doesn't make you a hero, it makes you a hypocrite. We deserve leaders who fight for tenants, not profit from their suffering, and that's what's happening now. Everybody's profiting off people's suffering, living in the streets, dealing with pollution, dealing with flooding. You're building three new apartments. Wow. I wonder how many of them people can afford? What, is it 10 out of 50? 5 out of 50? You don't care about the residents. You don't care what we come to say. Eight years, I still haven't gotten the answer. If my neighborhood was a different zip code, I damn bet you for sure that would have been fixed a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jane Gosh, president and CEO of Discover Kalamazoo at 240 West Michigan. I'm coming to share some good news with you and link that in support of two of the things that were on the communication agenda today. So the first is we recently got our 2024 annual visitor spending data for Kalamazoo County from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And I want to share the actual results first with the county, as it's county-level data, but I will tell you that we've learned that visitor spending in 2024 supported 7,000 jobs, 7,000 direct jobs in Kalamazoo County were directly supported by the spending that out-of-towners do in Kalamazoo County. And programs like the Brush the Block from the Arts Council bring people into town and therefore support those jobs, and they're good jobs that are supported by that industry. Everything that the Arts Council does, we love promoting the work that they do. We've considered, we've used our geolocation data and show that Brush the Block brought people downtown. It brought them down, and then it supported the businesses in that area. They weren't just there to see the murals, they went and supported the businesses, and that drives business revenue. Again, it supports those jobs. One of the things that we're missing, we believe, as Discover Kalamazoo, that we're missing in Kalamazoo County is a unique boutique hotel. When we bring influencers, for example, to help promote Kalamazoo County, when we talk about where we should have the influencers stay, one of the things that they about where we should have the influencers stay, one of the things that they ask for that we cannot really deliver today is a hotel that is truly a unique property, a one-of-a-kind property. We are very excited about the work that Plaza Corp. is doing with the courthouse renovation to turn that into a hotel. And what more unique property than that beautiful building to turn that into a hotel and be right there, right on our main street, and by Bronson Park, and across from City Hall? And imagine what the visitor experience is going to be to stay in that hotel. We think it's going to be enormously successful and really fill a gap in our market, and we couldn't be more pleased to support that project. I would ask the city council to strongly consider supporting that brownfield project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Chris Glasser. I live on the East Side neighborhood. Just wanted to share a quote from Donald Trump. In our inner cities, which we're going to be talking about, it is a big part of war now. It's a big part of war. We are under invasion from within. He backed up his words with action. We are seeing National Guard being deployed across the nation. ICE is conducting military-style operations, literally repelling from Black Hawk helicopters, detaining entire apartment buildings, including U.S. citizens. ICE has become so unhinged that they are even accidentally pepper-spraying and gassing local law enforcement. We have a president who cannot stop talking about serving a third term. His supporters want to put his face on our currency. This isn't a partisan matter. It's not Democrat versus Republican, liberal versus conservative. We're not talking about abortion, gun control, or taxes. This is about democracy and the future of our country. I'm just a U.S. citizen, and I feel like there's not much that I can do except use my voice, which is what I'm doing tonight. Now, I don't doubt that every one of you oppose what I've been talking about tonight, but the question is, what are you going to do about it? Now, I'm not delusional. I know that you are all city commissioners and mayor. I don't expect you to be able to solve this, definitely not by yourselves. But will you do anything? Will you at least speak up against fascism and authoritarianism like I am tonight? To me, silence isn't an option. And as a reminder for everyone, there is an election this year. Vote on or before November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Seeing no one else, I want to thank everyone that took the time and made the effort to come here to our public meeting to provide comments. We are now on to an item that we moved from earlier on our agenda here, which is item L1, approval of the city manager candidate interview list. And it was moved up on the agenda here, just so everyone would not have to stick around that, for that, till the end of the meeting. Also, we have a commissioner that may need to leave a little earlier, because I think you have a very, very early flight in the morning. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
That's true. Okay. So, I just wanted to set us up here just a little bit on this, just as a reminder. So, back to my comments at the beginning of the meeting, is that it's been 12 years since we hired a new city manager, and that is one of the really biggest responsibilities that a city commission has in the form of government that we have. And the form of government that we have here in Kalamazoo, which is very much like cities our size and smaller all over, similar in Grand Rapids, in Battle Creek, Benton Harbor, you name it, across the state, is we have a commission, city manager, form of government. And that means in our form of government, it is not the elected mayor who works as the administrator and the director of the city on a full-time basis. The elected mayor is one of the commission members, one vote equal to any commission member's vote. And our charge is to hire a city administrator, which does the bidding of the city commission, develops the budget in line with the policies that we set forward, and then does the day-to-day management of the activities here for our great team at the city of over 650 people. So, this is something that does not happen on a regular basis. Our current city manager, Jim Ritzma, announced some months ago, gave us a lot of heads-up that he was going to be retiring, and so we began the process to search for and select a new city manager. And in order to do all that work, we have some individuals here on the city commission who stepped forward, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Prado, and Vice Mayor Hess, to, in essence, be the subcommittee to help drive this forward. And one of the first things we did is we contracted with a national firm, Raftellus, to help us with that recruitment process. That has occurred over the course of time. We've been collecting public comments. We've had official activities where we have collected public comments on our website and held some forums. We've also had community members who, on their own, have organized events and collected comments, and then submitted those to us as well. From that whole process, we created what, really, a profile, what we were looking for in our next city manager, not only input from this commission, but from the community. And that is, really, that profile was, is what is being used to evaluate all the applications that have been received over time. So, I think as of, at least up to a few days ago, we have received 56 applications. And our, you know, very qualified, a professional team at Raftellus, who's helping us with this, evaluated those applications to look for congruency with what we were looking for in a city manager. At this point, we have received a binder with those recommended candidates, and that is something that commissioners have had an opportunity to review, a very extensive evaluation of those candidates with their CV, their employment history, their letters, highlights, and that sort of thing, and connections to news articles that they may have appeared in, that sort of thing. A rather broad description of that person's work history, and maybe even public life history, as represented in the news. We had the opportunity to meet in closed session to discuss those candidates with Pamela from Raftellus earlier and get our questions answered. However, when we make, we will now at the point where we need to make decisions about who those candidates are that we're going to choose to interview for the job of city manager. And it's a little bit, I don't know if you call it an odd process, but the way the process works is many apply. A lot of people do have jobs, perhaps as assistant city managers, other places, or city managers in smaller cities. And up until the point where they know they're being seriously considered, we make a commitment, and this is standard practice, we make a commitment to confidentiality. In other words, you may apply for this job, and you may have gone through the process, and we may have seen your name, but if we do not determine that you are an individual that we are going to publicly interview, allow the community to give feedback on, allow the community to meet, if we do not select you for that, well, then our commitment is that your name stays confidential. Certainly, it's your right, if you wanted to announce yourself, "I applied for this job," that's fine, but we will not be revealing the names of those who applied for this job until we get to the point where we have determined the candidates that we are actually going to interview. Reflective of that, the action that we are going to be taking now is by using a letter approach, tying a letter, like A, B, C, or D, to an individual's name, we are, in public, going to do our own individual rankings of the candidates that came to us about who we would like to interview. Very quickly, even though these candidates have committed their interest, very quickly after that list is determined, we will go back and get in touch with those candidates once we have determined ourselves who those candidates are. We'll get in touch with them, and we'll let them know, now's the time. If you're still on this, fine, your name is going to become public. If for some reason you've determined that you don't want to continue forward, then your name will not be on that list, your name will not be public. So, that's what we're in the process here. So, that will seem, I mean, in some ways, it's a little awkward. It's just the best way to do it is that we will be voting and ranking folks who we intend to interview based on a letter associated with their name. So, that's what the process is. That's one reason also we're doing it early in our meeting, and perhaps before the meeting's over, we will actually be able to get the information about whether all the candidates that we have selected are indeed willing to have their names be public and then go forward. There's a continuing process that's going to take place. So, just as a reminder here, is that after our meeting tonight, the next steps in this process include a candidate meet and greet on the evening of October 14th. And this will be, all be on our website, but just want to make sure people know this. And I'm hoping that anyone in the community who would like to will be able to attend that. And then a day of interviews on October 15th, and those are public as well. We will have a set of questions for each candidate that they will answer in public, as well as making any statement that they would like to make relative to their candidacy to be city manager. Right now, what I would like to thank is everyone who's here in the chambers. There are people spend a lot of time in the chambers organizing events to collect public comments, providing public comments themselves to us, and all who may be watching who have participated in this, thank you very much. At the end of the day, this is a choice of the elected city commission. That's one of our responsibilities. Certainly, this is citizen representation, because everyone who sits up here is also a person who lives in Kalamazoo, is involved in Kalamazoo, and has accepted this responsibility, and I would say actually sought it out, to have the opportunity to have this kind of input in selecting a city manager. An important and a bit daunting task. That all said, Commissioner Hess, I mean Vice Mayor Hess, would you like to add anything to that?
Just a few things to add, because we're in new business, and this would be a report from the committee, anyway. The meet and greet will be at the Catalyst Center from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. on the 15th, or I'm sorry, on the 14th. And there, on our city manager page, on our city manager's search page, there are instructions for parking, directions, and things like that. So, please go to the city manager page for that. And I think that's all I wanted to add. Everything was wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Anything I've left out so far, I think, commissioners? Good to go? Okay. So, we've got a couple decisions to make, and the first thing we need to discuss and decide on is the number of candidates we want to interview. So, that is something I think shouldn't take too long. I don't know if there's a recommendation from someone here. We would take, do we need to take action on that, Turna Leal, or is that something we can just agree on a number? That's good enough?
You can agree by consensus on that.
By consensus. Okay. Thank you, Turna Leal. Any thoughts, proposals, commissioners, about the number of people that we should determine that we want to interview at this point, based on the rankings that we'll soon complete? Thoughts?
I'll begin with, I'll begin with, no more than four people would we want to interview. So, four, that we rank four.
Okay. Other thoughts about that?
Thoughts.
So, yeah, I'm just going to make a little comment, kind of put this into perspective. It's helpful for me also. I hope that will be helpful for everybody, is that there are a variety of things that, from the applicant's perspective, that they're considering when they look at a job like this. And it's, you can't clearly, you know, determine absolutely what those things are. Obviously, applicants are interested in the opportunity. They see what Kalamazoo's like, but they may already, like I mentioned, they may already have other employment. So, an applicant, for example, who is taking the risk to apply for another job, even though they have one, might make a decision like this. Okay, they're interviewing 10 people. My chances might not be so good. I don't think I'll risk going public on this if you're interviewing 10, for example. Or, so those are calculations that people make. People also might make calculations, and this is as anybody would. There's, well, there's another candidate who I know is applying, and I think they might be better qualified, whatever. I've heard about it, and I've decided I'm going to withdraw my name. Relative to that, what we're trying to do, I think, is trying to hit a sweet spot where we're not providing a disincentive for people who are involved to apply, but also interview enough people where we feel that we're giving ourselves a choice. And so, that's, I think that's art and science, kind of picking that number. So, four has been proposed. Other thoughts about that, Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I think choosing of the four, that would be a good number for me to interview.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'd agree with four as well. Excuse me. I'd agree with four as well, you know, for the points that you all mentioned already, as well as, you know, from consulting with our search firm, Raftellus, you know, that was a number that Pamela suggested as well. So, I'd agree with that.
Okay. So, that's good points. That was also a recommendation from, you know, from Raftellus. Other thoughts? Any concerns about that number? Are people comfortable with that idea, then? Yep? Okay. Well, then, four it is, Turna Leal. Next step is voting. So, Clerk Borling has prepared some ballots for us. They're paper ballots, and I think the idea that we're thinking about here is going ahead and ranking the individuals who are kind of in this last cohort here, which we're determining who we're going to interview. At this point, I don't know if we've decided whether we want to rank just a certain number? If we want to rank more? Yeah, Commissioner Wilson?
I think we agree to rank them all, just in case there's an event of a tie for the fourth person.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So, the ballots will come out. We will rank, so at this point, we have had, we originally started with 10, and we did have a couple people drop out, I believe, of this last selected group. I think we're down to seven names now. Is that correct? So, at this point, Clerk Borling, I believe you have ballots ready. So, suggestion is literally rank from your first choice to your seventh choice. So, that said, once we do that, it's not going to be necessarily immediately obvious who those folks are. So, I think what will happen is I'll propose a short recess after our voting, and that will give an opportunity for Clerk Borling and maybe Deputy Clerk Moss to work with that and come up with who those top four are out of our ranking. Presumably, the math will work out. I hope so. So, it'll be a clear four. And then, that information will be communicated to Pamela from Raftellus, is that correct? And she will, once again, then reach out quickly, and I think these candidates are all aware, they're supposed to be near their phone, and verify that those top four are indeed still willing to interview and have their names public. Does that sound like we want to go? All right. So, Clerk Borling, do you have the ballots?
Yes, sir. And I just want to ask commissioners to put your names at the top of them. There's a spot there for that. There's a spot there for that.
Are we all set with the voting? Everybody done? Everybody remember to put their name on their ballot, right? Doesn't count otherwise. So, okay. Maybe we can figure it out if there's one ballot with no name, but. Okay. So at this point, then we'll take Clerk Borling. Shall we give ourselves 10 minutes here? 10, 15 minutes?
15 would be good.
15, okay. So we'll do a 15-minute recess. What time is it right now?
Eight twelve.
Hmm?
Eight twelve.
Eight twelve. So we will come back at, oh, let's call it eight thirty then. I'd kind of like to get rid of this thing. When should we collect these? When should we collect these? Because I don't really like them laying around.
Right. Because you're only going to get, you're going to get the four files back. So maybe give them all back to Aaron tonight. So they're not out public.
So should we worry about leaving these laying around or what?
Not yet. We don't want to leave them laying around. Who's going to stay? Can we put them with the clerk? Let's put it, let's give them to Scott. Can we give them to Scott? Can we give them to Scott? To look over. Are you going to stay here?
We ready here, colleagues? Okay. Well, I'm giving everyone a couple of extra minutes for chatting here, but we do have more to do. So I am going to call this meeting back to order. And for the tally, I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Borling. It looks, I'm sure it's up on all three screens so people can see it. I'm sorry, it's still not particularly illuminating at this point, since we don't know who we're talking about. But Clerk Borling, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The top four candidates in terms of the point totals after the ranking. Candidate F had forty-six total points, candidate C had thirty-four, candidate D had thirty-four, candidate A had twenty-seven. Those are your top four. And to round it out, it was then candidate G, candidate H, and candidate B.
All right, thank you so much Clerk Borling for your quick work and nice use of Excel. Beautiful chart. So Commissioners, just a reminder for all of us here, the next step is for Pamela from Raftellus to contact the candidate F, candidate C, candidate D, and candidate A. And confirm that they are indeed still prepared to take the next step, which will mean that their names and information will be made public and they will participate in the balance of this process. Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate that. Little bit complicated here, but we're able to get through that. So at this point, do we have to make any motion to come back to this attorney wheel? How's that going to work?
Yes, I would recommend a motion to lay this item on the table so that you can come back at a later time during the meeting to pick it up and announce the candidates' names if they're available.
So what's the official motion then that someone will make?
Motion to table item L1 on the table. That's it.
Just, all right, to table item L1. Is there a motion?
The table.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker. Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Roll call, I presume?
It can be a vote, just a general vote.
Okay.
As in nays.
All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, Commissioners, motion passes. We'll get to that later. That will give Pamela an opportunity to contact the finalists. So we'll come back later. So now we are back to our regular agenda, the consent agenda, Manager Ritzma.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the following items presented for approval. First, approval of a one-year contract with PBS Chemical Solutions to provide liquid sodium bisulfate for wastewater treatment in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Next is approval of a professional service agreement with Pryne and Newhoff for the design of the twenty-fifth, or Thirty-Fifth Street and M96 Transmission Loop Project in the amount of one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Next is the approval of a contract with County Line Nurseries for 2025 tree planting in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Next is the approval of a contract with Jones Chemical Incorporated for the purchase of liquid chlorine cylinders for water treatment in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. Next, the approval of a contract supplement on change order with the Foster Group to finalize development of the 2025 wastewater rates and to provide a platform for ongoing wastewater rate development in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Next is the approval of a contract with Division VII Building Contractors for primary settling roof placement, raw pump and instrument tech building roof repairs in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Next is the approval of a contract with Caris LLC for sodium hexametaphosphate in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Next is the approval of a one-year contract with Water Solutions Unlimited for the purchase of fluorosilic acid for water treatment in the amount of two-hundred-thousand dollars. Next is the approval of a contract extension with Mission North for downtown parking and mobility consulting in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty dollars. Next is the approval of a contract supplement and change order with Aldi Dosa Associates Incorporated for water system corrosion control improvements in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and six cents. Next is the approval of the purchase of One Elgin Pelican Sweeper from McQueen Equipment LLC doing business as Bell Equipment Company through the MyDeal Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Next is the approval of a contract with RW Lepine to replace the galvanized domestic water pipe at the Kalamazoo City Hall in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. Next is the approval of a contract with Alhorn Engineering Company for the purchase of liquid phosphate for water treatment in the amount of five-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Next is the approval of a contract with Republic Services for the rental, placement, and removal of roll-off containers for street sweeping operations in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Next is the approval of a one-year contract with Royal Chemical to provide liquid sodium hypochlorite for wastewater treatment in the amount of six-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Next is the adoption of a resolution setting a public hearing for October 20, 2025, to consider an application from Nineteen Props LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate at 261 East Kalamazoo Avenue. Next is the adoption of a resolution setting a public hearing for October 20, 2025, to consider an application from ACW3 LLC for a commercial redevelopment exemption certificate at 227 West Michigan Avenue. Next is the approval and acceptance of a public utility easements from Michiana or With Michiana Land Development LLC for water main installed as part of the Phase Four of the Applegate Point Development. Next is the approval of the minutes from the city commission meetings on September 15, 2025. Next is the approval of a purchase agreement for the purchase of 1216 South Berdick Street, 1222 South Berdick Street, 1228 South Berdick Street, and 121 West Crosstown Parkway.
Thank you very much, Manager Ritzma. So Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 19, postpone item 20 until October 20, 2025, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess. Supported by Commissioner Decker. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Commissioner Cooney has.
He has, okay.
Left the room. Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Now with the regular agenda, City Manager Ritzma.
Item H1 is approval of the purchase of 6086 East Michigan Avenue from Scott Smelker and Sarah Smelker for two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
No, there isn't, but our Public Services Director, James Baker, is available if there are any questions.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm wondering, you know, I was kind of taking a look at the purchase agreement here. And I'm just wondering, was this the only parcel within the area that this could be used for the water facility? And why we chose that particular spot?
Good to see you, Director Baker. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Commissioners. To answer that question, I think certainly there's other properties that we could locate this station. So really what this project is about is locating a new station that would have the ability to transfer water demands between three different pressure districts. So we've got a general location that we wanted to be at. We wanted to be at the confluence of those three pressure districts. And that location is in Comstock, around the area of East Michigan and 26th Street. In that area, there's also railroad tracks that are railroad property owned by, I believe, either MDOT or Amtrak that do take up a lot of space. There's also a lot of residential housing in that area. Generally with public services projects, we really look for property that's for sale first. We would never want to look at eminent domain. So this property was for sale in our project area. It was not residential, so we're not taking any housing inventory away. And it was available at a cost that was, you know, below market for that area. So to answer your question directly, I think it was, yeah, certainly there's other property that could serve the purpose. But this was kind of that best fit between something that was available at the time. It was in our price range. It doesn't impact or reduce residential housing. And it also can be acquired without any sort of use of eminent domain.
Thank you for that. So, yeah, I kind of saw this, I think this property went on the MLS beginning back in April of last year and then reposted back in September. Again, reading the agenda report, it was appraised at two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. I guess I'm wondering why we are paying almost thirty thousand dollars over the appraisal price?
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, the appraisal, that's, you know, certainly an opinion at cost. I think when it comes down to it, the owner had a different opinion of what they'd like to get for that property. So there was a counter offer involved with that. Usually in terms of property sale offers, we usually offer appraisal amount. And then the owner had a counter offer, which was higher than that. We evaluated that against the property in the area, our overall needs, and kind of that benefit of, you know, acquiring the property and what our other alternatives would be. And we ultimately agreed with that counter offer and made the recommendation forward.
What was the original price, do we know?
I don't have that in front of me, but usually we offer right at appraisal. So I believe that, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it would have been somewhere near two-twenty.
Two-twenty? Well, that was the appraisal price. And I guess my question is, were we not, when we talk about a counter offer, usually a counter offer, you know, you kind of meet somewhere in the middle. I'm just trying to figure out, was it two-forty-nine when they first had it up there? I guess I'm just wondering why we're spending an extra thirty thousand dollars?
Oh, I see your question. So I don't know what that exact counter offer was. I know that the price you see is what we settled on. I don't, I can't recall that what the actual counter was from them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other questions on this particular item? Thank you, Director Baker.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, is anyone else like to comment on this item? It's item H1. If you have a comment specific to this regular agenda item, please come forward. State your name, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, the recommended action, Commissioners, is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman. Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, seeing none, Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H2, City Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of a resolution establishing the Porter Street Neighborhood Enterprise Zone.
Is there a staff report on this? I see there is, because Bobby Durkey is coming forward.
Our Assistant City Planner, Bobby Durkey, is going to give a presentation.
Thank you, Assistant Planner Durkey. Good to see you.
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, and City Commissioners. And thank you to Logan and Jamie for the larger brownfield discussion. It'll put all this in context. And you may have noticed in the, well, I'm sure you noticed, in the consent agenda, the two certificates for the CRA. So we have those three, you know, local tax incentive approvals as part of the larger brownfield redevelopment authority. And I'm hoping my presentation is a little more exciting than the city manager hiring process. So this is about the Porter Street NEZ. The public hearing was on September 15th for this. And prior to that, there was notice sent to different taxing jurisdictions. And I'm trying to see if I'm hitting the right button. Neither are working. Thank you, Scott. All right, so the, you know, the larger transformational brownfield, this is one of those three sites. This is 619 Porter, which was the northeastern one. This is at Porter Street and North Street up on the north side. The proposed development is a fifty-eight-unit mixed-use development. This was a development which had received site plan approval in 2022. So from a city design or code perspective, this has been looked at before. And as time's gone on, obviously, the development didn't move forward. So it's a little unique in that a lot of, you know, the meat of the development has been sorted out by staff beyond the initial overview. And as has been mentioned, it qualifies or could qualify for up to fifteen years based off of the city's NEZ policy. And the ways that this development seeking to do that is by affordability and reduction in available parking. Now it works. I can skip over this pretty quickly. This is the connection to the transformational brownfield about the three different sites that were discussed earlier, the others being the Spearflex Building on Kalamazoo Ave and the Courthouse. And these are the local supports. Something I wanted to highlight with this, the development, you know, I, the presentation earlier gave a good overview of the reduction in taxes, that large pie of the development, if you will. So I wanted to highlight some of what does the city get in return. A lot of times you think of a development, I often reference greenfield development, you see new infrastructure get built. And a similar process happens in the city of Kalamazoo. Oftentimes, we're developing a much different land use and there's different codes. So this development, for example, land use, and there's different codes. So this, uh, development, for example, there's no sidewalk along the south side of, um, North Street over there. You know, the new development would have new sidewalk. There's a, some new water main associated with it, and, uh, two new fire hydrants. Uh, when it went through site planner view, a lot of those details are, are found. So, uh, you know, one of the opportunities that happens here is, in that investment, is public improvements, often in underground utilities, uh, potentially lighting in new streets. And, uh, the, the, within the brownfield plan, you'll see the county housing plan, which are, um, the, the rings of different years you could get match that exactly. And this is within one of the areas that's highlighted, uh, as for multi-unit, um, development housing, where the county housing plan looks at the housing needs from areas out in rural Brady Township to, um, heavily developed parts of the city of Kalamazoo. And there's some areas where there's a level of density that are only possible in the city of Kalamazoo. And this isn't the densest area in that area. It's the next one out, and the mixed-use development aligns with that and is a permitted development by our zoning ordinance. So the, the new district that was, uh, is presented, here it shows the, uh, size presented at the meeting, and I'll cover, um, for the final decision, um, staffs proposed to reduce it back to what was the original request. Uh, the district itself, there was, uh, some questions, uh, while this was going out. Uh, staff mentions a fifteen-year tax abatement, but the district sunsets in five years. So what that is, this district is created, um, but no out, certificates have to be applied for based off of a qualifying development. So while the, uh, district exists, anyone in that district could apply for a certificate. So if, uh, the fifteen years are granted, then the district may dissolve, but those certificates would continue after it was gone. A, a little bit of a nuance in there. And by the state's act, um, with the, the size, that, you know, there's been some questions on the size of how much NEZ can occupy the entire city. Um, there's ten to fifteen percent permissible, um, by the act, and currently the city's at one point five percent, and this wouldn't even change that second percentage. We'd still be at one point five percent. So the final resolution and the one in front of your, in front of the commission today is the single block. When, uh, we created the policy, the city developed, uh, an intake spot for interested individuals to seek information or apply for an NEZ district. On that initial request, it was for, um, this block and some other parcels nearby that to develop or own. Um, so looking back at, uh, the, the concerns of the, the size of the district, because this is in the NCBDA, and there were concerns expressed of, um, tax capture by other new developments. Where, since the original request was focused on the six-nineteen development, there's some size requirements that apply. And, uh, we have, uh, there's an internal staff review that I coordinate, uh, when these come through to make sure the district we create aligns with the many varying goals of the city. For example, one thing that we look to avoid is, um, creating, um, blocks broken up by NEZs. However, through the research of this one, single parcel NEZs are possible, and that was where, why it was brought back to be reduced here. And, uh, the reduction is still within the area where the decision today would be for the block right there, bounded by North Street, Porter on the east, Ransom on the south, and Pitcher Street. And the six-nineteen Porter development is the northeast quarter of that square, basically. So covering the incentives and policy, um, as I said, there's, there's years of support where this one could qualify for fifteen years. Um, this NEZ district would support new and rehab NEZs. Um, as we get closer in the year, my office, I've been receiving more of the homestead NEZ, uh, inquiries. Um, this particular NEZ would not, uh, there's no how, there's not a, it wouldn't have any houses in it, so this one isn't, uh, tailored to seek for a homestead NEZ. It's for newer rehab. And generally what those are, those are more recent changes in the last ten years to the act, where it primarily covered single-family housing, where the new and rehab NEZs cover mixed-use buildings, either new construction made up of apartments or units that can be owned. There's little variables for that. Or the rehab NEZ is utilizing an existing structure, a portion of an existing structure, for the same qualifying benefit. Uh, an example is, over there on North Row Street, um, it is partially new NEZ because there's some new floors, and there's also some certificates for a, uh, rehabilitation NEZ, because you've got that old nineteenth-century building now full of units. So it's a good practical example of the other side of the benefit, what it incentivizes. And as I said, after the certificates are created, uh, after the district is created, certificates are applied for, and this body would have to approve those. And those often include the, the final, uh, estimates to a lot of those NEZ numbers that are disgusted. Discuss, not disgusted. And, um, I want to make sure I, anything I covered, I'd missed there on my list there. Uh, then the tax reduction is only provided after the investment is complete. Um, with the homestead NEZ, you buy a new house, you can qualify in December and then get ten years of abatement. Uh, the way it works for these are, if the structure's not there, has to be built, the certificate is held by the state until the city gives all of our final approvals. Then the abatement would begin at the end of construction. So even looking ahead, until that day comes, that savings doesn't start. And then, uh, as I covered before, it aligns with the county housing plan, and then, um, these units fill the gap of how, these types of housing units. And when I reference that, um, I'm talking about, um, attached dwelling units, single-family duplex, where these are, uh, it is a multi-unit residential building, which are classified in the housing plan. So that's, uh, the, the refresher on what's in front of you guys tonight. And again, the final district creation is for that single block where six-nineteen Porter is, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Assistant Planner Durkey. I appreciate it. Questions, Commission? All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your detailed explanation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item? That's item H2. If so, please come to the podium, give us your name, and whether you live in the city. Three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jess Thompson. I live in the Vine neighborhood, and as a candidate for the Kalamazoo City Commission and a small business owner, I am in full support of the proposed Porter Street NEZ. Um, creating incentives for residential development and rehabilitation in this area will, um, help to expand housing options, encourage more investment and strengthen our neighborhoods, all of which are key steps in moving Kalamazoo forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Maddie Jordan Woods, and I'm the Chair of the North Side Cultural Business District. We have been looking at this, uh, project for a couple months, and a executive committee has met at least six times on it. This project was looked at as that it does not help, it does not fit the North Side Cultural Business District plan. So then it went to the benefits of this project, and the developer said, "Look, what we would like to do is to propose that over a thirty-year time, what taxes would you get if it was not a NEZ project? And we would like to do a one-time payment, that as soon as the construction documents are completed, that we will give the NCBDA seven hundred thousand dollars that then can go to one of the priorities that was listed in the plan." The board voted to support this project. We hope that this commission will look at smaller neighborhood-based projects that come to you with the NEZ, because the policy that is, uh, before you tonight, that the city policy, it would disallow small developments by residents. So we hope that you all will be open when your resident projects come in. But we are here to, as, as they chair, is to support this project, and looking forward to when construction documents are approved and a seven hundred thousand dollar check will be sent, um, to the NCBDA authority to do priorities that was listed, so that residents that live in the neighborhood will benefit it, and particularly for businesses that are in the NCBD district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this item? It's item H2. Seeing no one else. Uh, Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. We're now down to reports and legislation. Manager Rissma.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just wanted to remind people that, um, we're, we're beginning the season of leaves falling from the trees, and the city has a leaf pickup program, and, uh, residents are asked to move the leaves to the curb area, and they will be, uh, picked up by the city. So it's always a challenge with Mother Nature on when the leaves fall, um, whether it's earlier in the year, or s- fall, or later. Uh, so, and we have to balance that with winter coming and snow. So more than likely, th- there will be a one-time, uh, pickup this fall, probably later, uh, November, early December. Uh, there's also a new leaf drop-off option available for our residents, and you can drop off leaves at the collection site, which is three-twenty-two East Dockbridge Avenue. And that's, will be open Monday through Friday between seven AM and three-thirty PM. And the leaf drop-off is only available during these hours and during the times of a leaf program, which is operating November three to December twelve, uh, and no holidays or weekends. Uh, there's more information available on the city's website, and, um, yeah, we just, uh, ask people to, uh, put their leaves out, and, um, we'll pick them up. That's all I have that's on, this.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Manager Rissma. Uh, so now we are down to L, where we had moved this item that, uh, was down here in new business again. And we, I think the announcement is at this point is that, uh, the, yes, Attorney Liel.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor.
No problem.
But we need a motion to remove the, the, uh, from the table, item L1. So it's a motion to remove from the table, item L1. You placed it on the table, now you gotta remove it.
Ah, gotta take it back off the table. Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman, supported by Commissioner Wilson. Can we do...
Just like the initial.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you Commissioners. The motion passes. All right. Now it's off the table. Back on the agenda, uh, Vice Mayor Hess, are you prepared to speak to this?
Drum roll, please. Uh, yes, I am. Uh, with gratitude to Clerk Borling and his staff and Pamela at Rafftelis, we have our four candidates that have agreed to be interviewed, uh, next week and Wednesday, and attend our meet and greet on Tuesday. Those candidates in alphabetical order are Elle Cole, spelled E-L-L-E, C-O-L-E. Second is Malcolm Hankins, H-A-N-K-I-N-S. Third is Otis Jones Senior, spelled O-D-I-S, Jones Senior. And lastly is Laura Lamb, L-A-M. So we have four candidates who will, who the city, who the, uh, the citizens can meet at the meet and greet at the Catalyst Center from five to six-thirty at one-eighty Water Street next Tuesday. And then following Wednesday at four PM, right here in City Commission chambers, we will interview those four candidates. And there will be an opportunity for community in, community input at, uh, both at the meet and greet, following the interview session, and then also for public comment at the meeting on October twentieth, where we will vote on our final candidates.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Hess. So just a reminder here, and I'm not sure who's gonna do this exactly, but I presume there will be more information posted, uh, what, maybe with further, uh, I don't know if the resumes or letters, whatever, will be posted on the city website for these individuals? Do you know what that plan is yet, or am I catching too early?
It is my understanding that, uh, our recruiter, Pamela Weidman, from, uh, Rafftelis, will be putting, uh, summary bios for each of the four interviewee candidates, and those should be available soon, uh, hopefully by tomorrow.
Okay.
On the city manager page, yes.
On the city manager page. Okay. Super great. Thank you, Attorney Liel. Appreciate that. Now is the opportunity for Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioners that would like to make comments this evening? Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to thank my subcommittee, Vice Mayor Hess, Chris Pradel, um, as well as our commission and community for trusting us as a subcommittee to help drive this process. Uh, it feels amazing, yet still surreal, that we're crossing this milestone and close, getting close to the finish line with four quality candidates, in my opinion. Um, secondly, uh, one of the things that's been keeping me up, uh, while on commission, and what has also encouraged me to get off of commission, um, is, uh, what is the arena and what that might mean for the, um, neighboring community. And today I had the pleasure of attending an event at the NACD, co-hosted by the Kalamazoo Community Foundation, um, that spoke to just that, um, looking at anti-displacement solutions and what we can do as a community, um, to help prevent that from happening, um, here, once the arena has been built. Um, not only was there representation from the city, um, T.O. Lamb came with us, um, Director Mitchell, I think he just left, but Director Mitchell was there. Um, but there were also people from the county, and then also several organizations across the community at the table, um, with solutions and also very concerned. So it was great to see that, um, not only is it a, a priority for the city, um, and the county, but there's also lots of great organizations that have this as their top priority as well. So I think I might actually get some sleep tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wilson. Other comments? Commissioner Pradel?
Sure. Uh, we, uh, cannot wait to welcome, uh, our finalists, uh, to come to the city and to meet you all. Uh, before we know it, I'll be here very soon, but we just really want to thank, um, not only the community for all your engagement, all fellow commissioners for all your work in looking through, uh, the really dense, uh, material, uh, last week, uh, to get to this process, but also to the fifty-six people who've applied up to this point. Um, by doing so, you really have enriched this process by giving us a lot to look at, and I feel really, really excited for the future of the city of Kalamazoo. Um, not only do we have an exciting future to look forward to, uh, in, uh, leadership in our next chapter, but we have elections coming up on November fourth, where the community is going to be involved and engaged in that process. And we also have the Imagine Kalamazoo two thousand and thirty-five process to engage in. And this is just, uh, cumulatively, just an incredibly exciting time to be engaged as a resident of the city of Kalamazoo. Uh, and so really excited to see and hear from those folks, um, in the coming, uh, weeks. Wanted to take a minute to also thank, uh, two folks, um, Dan and Holly Carmichael, who recently, uh, took, uh, took ownership of the Kalamazoo State Theater. That is a huge, huge deal. Uh, that is a very special place that in, until the, uh, mid-eighties was almost going to become a parking lot. I mean, could you imagine if that had just become a parking lot? I mean, how many missed opportunities, how many amazing artists and performances that have happened on those stages that have, like, culturally enriched our community? And I particularly want to thank Stephanie Hinman and the Hinman family for holding that building and that historic asset that's so amazing in our community for as many decades as they did, but also want to thank, um, the new owners for stepping forward and, um, believing in that future for our community. Also wanted to take a minute to recognize our very own Vice Mayor Hess, who on Friday was inducted into the K College Hall of Fame as an inductee, which is very, very exciting and a huge honor. We're very proud of you and, uh, proud of, um, all that you've accomplished in your career, which is, that's truly a testament to that work. And then lastly, I wanted to just make a mention, this is kind of a last-minute note that I put down in my notebook, but for the folks from the journalism program who are out here in the audience, you're the resident tonight. Talk about... talk about what we can do as a community. And I think one of the greatest safeguards that we have is really all you, in the work that you're gonna do in your future with journalism in our community and in the world. We need that more than ever right now. And it's true here in our community, it's true in our state, it's true in our country, and you are truly the guardrails to democracy. And so I think it's so critically important and exciting that you're here to be a part of this process on the local level. Because, you know, one of the things that we are trying to do and are trying to achieve and that you see up here tonight, is that one of the things that we can do as a city commission is show what normal looks like, what people who disagree sometimes can look like when we come together and have a shared vision of what we want in our community. We don't always see eye to eye, we have very different life experiences, but in the same respect, there are people who have a chance to tune in and look and be a part of these meetings and see what can happen when people can talk with each other and can reconcile when you, we're trying to work through something. And that, to me, is something that's very powerful as well. And I think it's incredibly important that we, as a group, model that and continue to model that with the future commission, so that we can kind of set the tone and model, even if it's at the local level, to say that we're gonna be the better side of what we can be in a democratic process. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris Prado. Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Appreciate that. I appreciate your comments and lifting up the state. And Commissioner Wilson, I think we're all gonna sleep a little bit better tonight. Yes, I had the great honor and opportunity on September 22 to deliver a proclamation to an icon in Kalamazoo, to Judy Sarkozy, for her years of investment in Kalamazoo from beginning the bakery, and for all of the things that she has done to grow this community through her passion and her love and her care. And so this was at the Geezer's Club, so we missed it tonight. Maybe they're still going. I don't think so. I don't think so. They're at the, in the basement of Shakespeare's. Anybody over 60, 65 is certainly welcome there. And Duke and the Loose Cannons are, they're actually a pretty good band. I must say, I had a lot of fun. And Judy was wonderful. She was gracious and very grateful. But congratulations, Judy Sarkozy. You know, and I was gonna also mention education, because in my comments last time, I did talk about Kalamazoo as an education destination, an education city. And while that's gonna continue to move forward in different ways, the minutes today that we approved, and who knows? Who reads through the minutes that we approved last time? But I did. And there were minutes there, and there was an open invitation by me to campuses, to have students present information on their activities, on their concerns, on their accomplishments, what's going on on campus. So anybody on campus, students, come and do public, you saw tonight, people come forth and do public comment. What do you have from the city of Kalamazoo? We want to hear from the students. We want to know what you're up to. And so please feel free to do that. Another thing with, with education is just, you know, that you are engaged, that the city, the city is actually your classroom. And thank you for trusting us with your learning. A few have mentioned it, but you had mentioned the event center, but we were able to attend the groundbreaking of that, where they talked about 650 jobs coming to Kalamazoo. 650 jobs because of that event center coming to Kalamazoo. The State Theater, I was able to talk to the architects from Boston, who have renovated two other theaters built by the same builder in the 1920s. And they're gonna bring it back to its original splendor, as well as its upgrades to ADA. We're also, we also just attended, right before we came here at 4 o'clock, the grand opening of the Kalamazoo Candle Company and Zero Bar. So it's a non-alcoholic bar, and it looks to be a wonderful space, populating the mall, and I'm really excited about that. And then, as many of you know, the Burdick's Bar and Grill is open again and welcoming. And so people, yes, are beginning to come back downtown. And downtown as a good thing. Downtown as a city center, a vibrant, healthy, thriving city center, where young people, to all people, are able to gather and be together around just common love of the city. And then we go back to our neighborhoods, and we stay engaged. But I'm really excited, the NEZ, obviously, about the economic development of our city. Let's keep it up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Just a couple things from me. One, it is, I had the opportunity to attend the annual gathering of the NAACP in a packed, packed ballroom. It's nice to have such support. And, you know, the tables are so close, you could barely walk around them. So anyway, great crowd and fantastic event, and I know that a ton of volunteer energy went into organizing that, so I want to say thank you to that whole team that put that together. And it's a great reason to get together. Fundraiser also, appreciate that. Last thing I wanted to say is just relative to some of the comments this evening, some that are personally directed to me, at me, I, you know, I am reluctant to use this position to, you know, respond directly to certain things. It feels like a little bit of unfair advantage that I can talk as long as I want, and I'm getting to sit up here and respond. And so I generally do not do that, and I'm not going to. I just wanted to say that for anyone who might watch later, who did comment, or anyone who's here watching, is that I have met multiple times with some of those individuals who commented off the dais, other places, and my offer to meet again still stands. I've made that offer. Sometimes people, you know, may determine that you don't want to take advantage of it, that's fine. But I feel that that would be a more productive way for us to get together and talk about issues that people care deeply about. So I'm just putting that offer out there again, in a public way. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.